Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, April 17th, and I will note for the record that Commissioner Madeira and myself are here and present in the Nat U Hill Room, and Commissioner Jones is joining us via Teams. And we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will begin our department updates. Ms. Kelly is joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a few updates. As of April 15th, emergency visits for COVID-like illness have continued to decrease, and wastewater concentrations are now trending down. Flu activity is still minimal. The Health Department, in collaboration with the Indiana Department of Health, is hosting an MMR vaccine clinic. This will be held on April 21st at the Monroe County Public Library, Ellisville Branch. This will be from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in Meeting Room B. Our public health clinic has vaccines available for all ages. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
I have none, other than, you know, now the measles virus is in Indiana, and so these measures are really critical. And this is a, this is a virus that can take lives very easily, and so vaccines are all the more important. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. I went to the last MMR clinic, so it was very quick and actually painless. So it's kind of nice. So highly recommend folks check their records and verify. All right. Any other departments have an update for us? Okay, great. We will now move on to public comment. This agenda item is reserved for conversation and commentary on items that do not appear elsewhere on our agenda. We ask speakers to limit their time to three minutes per person. Please give your name and county of residence when you begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Christopher Angie. I work at the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, but now I'm speaking as a Monroe County resident. I just want to say, I just gave blood to the American Red Cross, donated at City Hall today, and it took 30 minutes. It was painless. And it really is the least you can do. It's amazing now that they tell me where my blood goes. I got recently, I think it was one or two times ago, that it was a runner who was struck by a car, and we were able, you know, they were able to save his life because of people donating. And I got this fun T-shirt today, so... I just want to say, it's, it's so easy to do. It's not painful at all. So I just encourage all of the residents here in Monroe County. I know the Commissioners do a great job of plugging those, but there, there are opportunities everywhere around, so just look at the American Red Cross website for further details. Thank you.
Thank you. Important. Anyone else have public comment for items not on our agenda? You make sure, TSD, please ensure the clock is visible on our monitors. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Janay Tremble, and I reside in Monroe County. I worked in the Monroe County Assessor's Office from October 2023 to October 2024 as the Assistant Property Director before putting in my two-week notice and taking another position within the county. During my time there, I witnessed multiple violations of Indiana state code. This is not rumor or hearsay, but experiences that I personally witnessed and partook in. I saw the violations, heard the violations, and was instructed to perform them. The practice of sales chasing and the manipulation of racial studies are causing the housing and rental markets to increase inorganically, and this has been practiced by this office for years. I have hundreds of examples of documentation proving the state code violations, many of which I've already provided to this Board of Commissioners. 50 IAC 27-4-5, 50 IAC 27-11-2, 50 IAC 3.3-2-2, 50 IAC 15-1-3.5, just to list a few, and there are many more. I first blew the whistle and followed the suggested guidelines found on Indiana.gov for reporting illegal and unethical practices from elected officials in the proper chain of command. On 3/3/2025, per these guidelines, I reported this activity to my supervisors, the Department of Local Government Finance, and then I reported it to you, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, and the Monroe County Legal Department. And you have yet to hold a conversation with me concerning this matter. Instead, I experienced retaliation, bullying, and harassment from the assessor, HR, and from the county attorneys, from whom I filed a claim against. False accusations coming from social media that were in fact rumored with no supportive documentation were made against me and my employment threatened. Instead of the county investigating or even inquiring about the fraud I was reporting, the county opened an investigation against me to try to terminate my employment once again. I've been bullied and harassed by the assessor dating back to October 2024. I choose to publicly stand up for myself, my family, my friends, my neighbors, and for all the residents of my county, and ask that you do the same and open an investigation into the reported illegal activity of the assessor's office. In closing, I'd like to quote part of your opening statement, and I'm putting a demand on that statement, and I'm asking that you fulfill the oath. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to protect the rights of all people, and we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully without fear, and we will fight at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Repeating and stressing harmful policies, whatever their source. I'm pleading the Indiana whistleblower laws in my defense, and I ask that I do not receive more retaliation for exercising my local state and federally protected right as a resident in Monroe County to speak at this public meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else have public comment to offer? Raise your hand on Teams? Or come to the podium? Thank you very much. And we will now move on to our next item, please. Make a motion?
Yes, I would like to approve, move to approve the minutes from April 10th, 2025.
I will second that. Any comments, edits, or corrections? I see, no, no, nope, me neither. Ms. Turner King, since we have a Zoom attendee, we would need you to call the role, please, on this item.
Commissioner Madeira?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries three to zero. Look at the next item, please.
I move to approve the claims docket of accounts payable from April, April 17th, 2025, and for payroll from April 17th, 2025.
I will second that. Ms. Gallardo, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. The accounts payable claims docket for April 17th, 2025 totals $10,333,688.07. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for April 17th, 2025 includes $1,665,806.27 indirect cost, and the remaining $701,920.12 were for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,367,726.39.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, thank you.
I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, Ms. Turner King, if you would please call the role on accounts payable, April 17th, 2025, and payroll, April 17th, 2025.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Motion carries three, zero. I will note for the record that we received a report from the Treasurer. This is from March of 2025. We will now move on to new business. Commissioner Madeira, if you would make a motion, please, on that item?
Yes, I would like to move to ratify the emergency declaration.
I will second that. Who's managing that one?
I don't know.
I don't see...
If Jamie's on, I think what we, I could maybe give a little recap of over, I don't have the dates in front of me, but due to the weather issues that we've recently experienced, the Commissioners had to enact an emergency declaration at that point in time. This will help potentially some of our, of our residents as they move forward, trying to mitigate the expenses incurred as a result of the damages from the storms.
Yes. So I signed, I signed the first one for April 5th, and the second one was signed on April 12th. They both appear in the packet. So we don't know if there will be federal assistance or state assistance available. However, without the emergency declaration, we know it would not be available. So we, we have no idea what's going to happen at the federal level or the state level either. So all kinds of things can happen in that, in that context. So, huh, all right. So any comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
No, just that we really critically need to get funds to people whose property, whose lives are being disrupted by these storms, even before we get more weather this summer and spring.
And this weekend, yeah, because there's a chance of flooding this weekend. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of ratifying, I'm sorry, so Ms. Turner King, if you would call the role on ratifying the emergency declarations of April 5th and April 12th, 2025. Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries three, zero. Before we go to the next item, maybe you want to explain item B being tabled? I mean, did you want us to table that?
Yeah, I'm just requesting that you might want to consider tabling that. I have some concerns as I read the synopsis, and it states that B and L IT Services would be involved in our potential planning and preparation for vote center implementation.
Oh, that's item C.
I'm looking at the wrong one, so yes, sorry.
Ah, so you, you would like us to table item C?
Yes.
Until the May 1st meeting?
Yes.
Got it. We can do that.
All right.
Okay, because I was looking, I was like, what is...
Okay, yeah, the one I'm looking at online is not the, yes, I got it, sorry.
We're all good here. We've got it together. All right. Next item, please.
Yes, I would like to move to approve the 2026 application for Section 5311, 5339, Assistance for Rural Areas Grant and Authorizing Resolution 2025-21. Fund name, County General. Fund number 1,000, in the amount of $80,000.
I'm so sorry.
I will second that. We're, we're kind of chuckling because we, this is an item, I was like, why would we table this item? It's got to get passed today. All right, so, thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
In a second. And we have, Ms. Myers joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Myers. I'm with Area 10 Agency on Aging and Rural Transit specifically this morning, so thank you for making sure that got on the agenda. This is for our annual renewal grant to operate rural transit in Monroe and then three other counties. In your packet, you have the application, or the parts of the application that you need to sign and approve. But just to let everybody know, it would be for a total operating budget of $1,781,275, of which the federal 5311 grant would be $856,438, and the state match would be $311,595, which hasn't changed in years. And then, of course, leaving the local burden at $562,242. And we're hoping that the Monroe County Commissioners and Council will approve $80,000 towards that local match, along with other county governments. And then the other part of that is putting in to replace four vehicles. Three are buses from 2018 with almost 200,000 miles on them. We always stretch it as far as we can. In fact, a couple of them probably won't be running this year, and we're going to be waiting until next year's grant. And then one low-floor minivan, all of which will have ramps or, or lifts in order to be 100% accessible. That application is for $459,000, of which the federal government will pay, hopefully, $328,400. And then the local match is $68,850, which Area 10 commits from other sources, and not asking for Monroe County help. So that's the entire numbers game, if you have any questions.
Great. We actually don't have it in our packet, but I feel very familiar with all of this because it's been so many years. But I do want to see if Commissioner Madeira has any comments or questions.
No, I've actually looked at documentation from prior years, and you and I, when you kind of walked me through the history of transit and how this is funded a long time ago, this was very helpful. So thank you so much for that.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. I do actually have two questions for you.
Sure.
One is, the USDA has already cut $1 billion in food relief and spending for lunch programs and food banks. Are they talking about cutting transit as well?
They are not talking about cutting transit. I reached out to Todd Jennings, our indot program manager, and he believes that because it's considered infrastructure, that it will be supported and continued. There hasn't been any threats to that. Yeah, I know. On the food bank piece, you know, Area 10 also has a mobile food pantry for, not that I want to take up time, but we are feeling the hurt for that. In fact, the Saturdays are stuff of us, which isn't great weather for it, as it turns out to be, but, you know, you can't predict that. But we are, everybody's feeling that hurt, for sure.
Yeah, it's terrible. It's really terrible. And we have, we're currently, the Monroe County government is currently supporting the bus program that allows you to take non-USDA buses into, out of Ellisville and Bloomington, and how's that going?
It's fine. It's continuing as it has been.
Great.
So it has about the same ridership as it's, you know, been supporting the last year. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but, you know, I look at it every month, and it's, it's right there where it has been.
Great.
So I think that the funding that you've allocated for this year out of the remaining ARPA funds is going to cover, hopefully will cover, all of that through the end of the year. And of course, we've got the struggle of figuring out how that's going to be fixed for 2026 permanently.
Right. Well, I, I think we, I think we just get it on your calendar. I think we are going to make sure that it gets in the budget proposal first, the very first thing, instead of having to be added later, and Angie's writing it down. I can see her doing that. Thank you, Angie. And, and we will make sure that it's heard. And I'm, I'm just glad to hear that ridership continues apace, and I'm grateful for your ability to juggle and provide these services for our residents. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, I mean, I want to say Monroe County has been so supportive of rural transit, especially in the last few years. But, you know, I've been at Area 10 for 11 years, and it hasn't always been the cleanest and best relationship, and I feel like we've done a great job building that rapport and reputation over the years. But, you know, it, I also work with Putnam, Lawrence, and Owen County governments, so I can tell you that it's not as easy to exchange information and get people who are genuinely interested and concerned about trans, public transportation in your position. So I do appreciate that. It makes my job a little easier in that regard.
Well, we're grateful. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Ms. Turner King, will you please call the role on a 2026 application for Section 531, 5311, 5339, Assistance for Rural Areas Grant Authorizing Resolution 2025-21?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Three, zero. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Myers. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to table item C until our next meeting, which is May 1st. B and L IT Services LLC renewal for election support. I'd like to table that to May 1st.
I second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
I have none.
Okay. I don't know, Angie, if you have, if you'd like to speak on your concerns and...
Sure.
Yep.
Just, just so that everybody's understanding, I was looking at the synopsis here, and it references that B and L would have, it states here, that they covers upgraded heart equipment once approved by the state, potential equipment moves, and potential planning and preparation for vote center implementation. I need to know clarification as to what that input actually is, because this is a Monroe County government project, and I think we need to ensure that Commissioners who are responsible for these buildings and spaces have the authority to do what they need to do. So that was my only concern.
And May 1st won't hurt you if we delay this?
It does. We actually have, we are holding claims, waiting for this to be approved. So if we can pay some claims before this is actually approved, then we can submit it.
For clarity, is the claims regarding the storage unit?
Yes, specifically.
Okay, thank you.
The, previously, the Clerk's Office had an agreement with a storage unit, and now that storage unit is going to be encompassed in B and L's service agreement. And so the claims for the storage unit, I think, are waiting to be paid. The storage unit is going to be a two-year agreement, and it's going to be in Mr. White's name, who will provide access to the Clerk's Office.
And it's also for a reduced rate. They agreed to keep us at the current rate rather than giving us a bump up if we pay in the two years. So, and they have been very kind and very, very patient for their money, but we, I mean, it is a small business. We do need to get them.
Right. I don't know that I understand why it would not be in the county's name.
That become, I will defer to Ms. Turner King, who... So the agreement was previously in the county's name, and when it comes time to renew it, I had mentioned that to renew it, we would have to have a public hearing, and there are some several steps and clauses that need to go in the agreement for it to be a county agreement. And in explaining that to the Clerk's Office, the option that they elected to do was place it in this agreement. It is for storage of equipment that, I believe it's, it's, the only thing I know is it's election equipment, so I don't know what equipment is there.
It is a lot of election equipment, not the voting machines, per se, but everything that goes along with it. And so there is a stipulation in the agreement, please correct me if I'm wrong, that everything in the storage is property of Monroe County. They're just paying the bill, and they're going to be held, they're not going to be held liable if any natural disaster happens because it is Monroe County's property. And legal did suggest this option for us to just get it paid and move on.
It is more complicated.
And it didn't need, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, to be this complicated.
I think we could put the lease in the county's name. There are two options, and this is one of the options. A third option is to see if there's a place for the storage of this equipment that is county-owned, but I don't have an idea of what this equipment is.
Nice question.
Please.
Why would we put it in another party's name?
So the contract previously has Mr. White, I'm trying to find the clause. It said he would maintain storage loc, or, that's an old version. Previously, the contract alluded to that he was maintaining and inventorying the equipment that was already in storage. And because he was already doing that, it seemed appropriate to have him manage the storage unit, too.
And he was doing that pursuant to his duties under this contract?
Under the previous version of this contract.
Yes.
And just for clarification, we also do have keys and access to that storage. So it's not just the vendor, it's us as well. Just make sure that is very understood.
I understand that, and I, I think for a normal business, that's fine to do, assign an agent to manage a lease or, or a storage unit, but my concern is, this is the people's property. And I don't feel comf, I, I can't think of an example where we've ever done this before, where we've given somebody that ownership of a space, oh, you'll have access. It's the people's property.
And I agree. When I was looking at this, I couldn't find an example where we've had a storage unit in someone else's name, and I think that's because most of departments don't have outside storage units.
But I can't think of anywhere else where we've got county property in someone else's possession that... Is it, is it really going to be problematic to wait two weeks?
It is. We're already a month late on giving this sergeant. They've waited, they've, they have waived the fee, the late fee.
I just don't feel, I'd rather pay a late fee than do the wrong thing here.
I agree.
I, I don't know. I'm just, I don't feel comfortable with this. It's nothing you've done. I mean, I get it. You're, you know, I'm not, but I, I just have real concerns with something that I've never seen before, and I've been here 12 years doing this job, 12 years. And...
Unfortunately, we weren't giving any other storage options, so this is where they resorted to actually store. And I'm trying to think of, so we have tables, we have equipment, we have dividers, we have voting booths, we have, and he has inventory of all of this. I mean, he's very meticulous. Our, our vendor is amazing.
Can we, can we...
Get a copy of that inventory?
Yeah, let's get a copy of the inventory, how big the storage unit is. Let's talk to Richard, Mr. Crider.
Exactly.
And let's see if there's a way we can do something else so that it is in our hands. We'll pay the, you know, whatever's due to them at that point as well, and we're not going to short anybody. Certainly, they, you know, I would never do that. But I would rather just wait on this than do the wrong thing and save a few bucks. This is one of those few times I'm going to say that. Write it down, because it won't happen much. Commissioner Jones, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement with you.
Thank you.
All right. So just to clarify, I just want to make sure we can pay the claims for the storage even agreed to the contract for the B and L just yet.
Let me ask this question. Can we, can we pay it out of our budget for a month? Our budget for a month, if we have to, instead of having this contract? In other words, is there another way to pay it? I don't know that there is. I'm just...
Know that we can.
Okay.
I think the concern is that the AllSafe storage contract is expired.
Got it.
I think we could, we, one option is we could ask AllStorage if we could do a month-to-month agreement. I know that will cost more, but the reason it's being included in this agreement is because it's for a longer period of time. And I know they have a month-to-month option. I think we've utilized the month-to-month in the past, and I don't know if they, we can have a conversation with AllSafe to see if that's an option.
Okay, so where should we... Okay, so where should we pull the overage cost from someone else's budget or - because you guys are incurring additional expenses, the Clerk's Office budget by us just not being able to pay. So I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just trying to get this out in the public so we know, everybody knows.
I get your question. I think we have to figure that out, and we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. This isn't the appropriate forum to dig through and figure that out. I think between legal staff and Angie and Mr. Kreider, there's some work that can be done.
Generally, this would come from 1215.
I just can't imagine late fees were that much.
Yeah.
Pull it out of my pocket.
And generally, you know, so everything associated with election comes from that so we can track all the costs incurred.
Okay.
So, I'll work with Molly and see what we can come up with that it will just come from the same fund.
Yeah. I want to acknowledge your concern. I do hear that because I know that it's your budget and it's not our budget to mess with. I hear that. I hear that. We'll figure it out, okay? And we've done our job, let these magnificent women do their job, and then we'll all come back together and do our job again on May 1st. Does that sound good?
Feel not comfortable with it. We just want to pay and just - I mean -
Well, I want to make sure the people's property is in the people's name, so I think I'm going to have to - you know, we'll figure that part out. I get it. I want you to know, I hear you. I hear you, and I respect your concerns, and thank you for sharing them. Okay. So, Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on tabling Item C until May 1st?
Sure. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. Sorry, this was all last minute, but we will get there. We will get there, okay? We'll figure it out. All right. Next item, please.
I would like to move to approve Resolution 2025-19, approving the ratification of the Help Americans Vote Act grant received by the Monroe County Clerk's Office.
I will second that. Okay. Thank you. This word. Tell us about it.
Wanted to make sure if you guys had any questions. It's basically, we have received a grant to help with the ballot printers, which will help us whether we have vote centers or not.
Yeah.
So, it really is a benefit for the citizens of Monroe County. We thank the state for giving us this grant. It's amazing. So, $35,873. So, basically, it's kind of a shift. We were informed that we had to pay it out before they're going to pay us, and so that's basically - I think we do have a line, but we had to go before the council to have it brought up so we can have that money come in. So we just need to make sure y'all are okay with it.
Good deal. Thank you. Now, the HAVA Act is very, very important. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Oh, Ms. Turner King. Go ahead, sorry.
And I didn't want to add that I prepared a resolution to go with the approval of this HAVA grant. So, on July 9th of 2024, the clerk submitted this grant application, and so it would be ratifying the grant application and then authorizing the execution of Attachment C. In communication with the Secretary of State's office, there is not an executed Attachment C yet, and so I was trying - the resolution is written as an either-or because at the time that I wrote it, I didn't know if it had been executed or not. So, this is, again, specifically for the $35,873,000 grant for the printers. There was a prior version of this, but I wrote the resolution to specify which one we are ratifying and authorizing the execution of Attachment C for.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Madera?
No, very, very important. Thank you.
Okay. I don't either. Thank you for doing this, and yes, the printers always come in handy. Always. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on Resolution 2025-19 to approve the ratification of the HAVA Act grant?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Molly, does Clerk Brown need to sign that C or will -
Clerk Brown will sign Attachment C and provide it back to the Secretary of State, and once she does so, can you please provide me a copy?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Next item, please.
Yes, I would like to move to approve multiple MOUs or Memorandums of Understanding Regarding Mass Countermeasure Dispenser Clinic Sites.
I will second that. Ms. Kelly, please tell us all about this.
Yes, so our Preparedness Coordinator just has been working to ensure that we have updated memorandum of understandings with certain locations throughout the county in the event that we do need to host a mass countermeasure dispensing clinic site. So, the purpose of that site location would be to be able to provide medications or vaccinations or information or education in response to an emergency that involves an infectious disease threat.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madera?
No, a very important community project, and hopefully one that does not get more important before the year's out.
There you go. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Madera.
Something that is wonderful to have in your back pocket, and you hope you never, ever, ever need it, but I'm so glad that you, your staff, the board have had the foresight to ensure that this is in place. These are nice-sized areas, and a shout-out to Sherwood Oaks Christian Church for doing what they didn't have to do for the community. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on the multiple MOUs regarding mass countermeasure dispensing clinic sites?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
I would like to move to approve Tyler Technologies' IoT website hosting, fund name Cumulative Capital, fund number 1138, and the amount of $12,000.
I will second that. Mr. Krone?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, currently, our CO.Monroe.in US domain is provided for free of charge by the Department, US Department of Agriculture, but it is our intent, hopefully in the third quarter and later in the third quarter of this year, to be migrated over to the IN.gov domain provided by the state of Indiana. The .gov domain provides increased security and puts us more in alignment with what other counties across the state are doing, which helps with visibility for the public. Part of that that goes hand-in-hand with that is a website underneath the same domain address. So, the state of Indiana has a program going with Tyler Technologies. For a very minimal cost, they will provide all website hosting for the counties under that domain. So, for the last year and a half, the county webmaster has been working with the departments to clean up their current website that they have, all the data that's on the backend. It's taken some time. The average county has 500 to 1,000 HTMLs on their website, which is documents, videos, pages connected to it. Here at Monroe County, we had 12,000, and we're only allowed a maximum of 1,000. The reason that was is early on, whenever we started a website, we didn't have a secure server that we could host that data on that the public could access without having to worry about security coming back. So, I understand how all that documentation got there, but now we need to move it. So, like I said, the webmaster for the last year and a half has been working with the county offices, and we've gotten 12,000 painstakingly whittled down to 1,500 HTMLs. So, this contract with Tyler is kind of two parts. Yeah. The way we've done that is we've had to move everything over into our SharePoint site that we now have. The webmaster's had to painstakingly rename, relabel, and redirect off of our website to that SharePoint site. So, yes, it's taken a lot of time. So, we've been working with Tyler Technologies in the state, and they've been really helpful on all this, but in addition to a much cleaner, improved website, the state's hosting provides us much more flexibility over what we have with our current site. I do get a lot of criticisms about how our current site looks and things that people would like to see changed, but we are limited on what we can do with that page, and so is the provider. So, with state's hosting, we have much greater flexibility with that. They are open to anything we want to see changed. They work with us on that. They have a ticketing system. One of the big perks of this, it also includes the ADA compliance software that we currently pay $7,000 a year for. So, after this is implemented, we'll be paying $250 a month, which is $3,000 a year for the site hosting. We currently pay seven to e-GOV for that, so we're going to go from $14,000 a year approximately down to $3,000 a year to host the same site. I don't know how many of you spend much time on the state's website, but it's very clean, it flows well. It's just a much updated from what we have. So, I'm asking for both these agreements for a total of $12,000 to be approved.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate the explanation. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this sounds like a good idea to me.
Commissioner Madera?
I agree. You had me at increased security.
Yeah. There you go. And, you know, and our - when we changed over our website last, we had this really great search capability, and then that disappeared, and I'm hopeful that the search capability will become improved again.
It will be, and part of the reason you saw issues with the search capability was how that data was structured in the back end of that website. That's where we run into problems early on, and it has got exponentially worse over time.
Got it.
So, one difference that we will have in - under the current system, each department had some - some departments had two or three content editors, but there was at least one per - as staff would leave, new staff would come in, the training wasn't always there, so it was kind of wild west a little bit. Under this new system, we'll be eliminating most of those content editors, and it'll be a very, very controlled environment, so that way we can maintain consistency through the whole thing.
Nice. Nice. Document naming and things like that have a lot to do with all of that as well. And then our email addresses will be changing in the future?
In the future. So, right now, all that, the county domain will stay the same for now. The only thing that changes is the county webpage. If visitors to the site go to the CO.Monroe.in.us, they will be redirected to the new site, so they can either go straight to the IN.gov or they can go to our old address. They will still land on that same page once all work is complete.
Excellent.
Then, like I said, in third - I hope for shooting for third quarter, there's a lot of work to be done to make sure we don't - a lot of dots to connect there to make sure we don't break any systems. Whenever you change a domain, that's a big undertaking.
It's huge.
We are taking our time to get that done.
Good.
But, yes, eventually, we will be over on the IN.us.
Yeah. Right. Thank you so much, and I appreciate that time that's being taken to do this, right? I think we're all going to benefit from that, including the residents of this county who need to use our website. So, thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none. Ms. Turner King, if you would please call the roll on the Tyler Technologies' IoT website hosting.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Do two motions?
Put all in the one.
Yeah, can you add this to the next motion? It's - yeah. Thank you so much. So, please, Item G.
Yes, I would like to move to approve the DLZ Traffic Study Agreement and the Traffic Study Cost Share Contract, fund name Edit EDIT-BAN, fund number 4816, and the amount of $28,200.
I will second that. Ms. Purdy?
Thank you. This is a proposal for traffic engineering services related to proposed developments that are anticipated along State Road 46 between Interstate 69 and West Arlington Road. This development is expected to include our Planned Justice Center as well as other residential and commercial development, according to the North Park PUD, and include extension of West Hunter Valley Road east of State Road 46 to West Arlington Road. This is - this traffic engineering study, as indicated here, is covering both the county's interests as well as the developers', landowners' potential interests on the other areas, and that is why Item Number Two, the Traffic Study Cost Share Contract, has come into play as I believe it's called Logan Land Development, is agreeing to pay half the cost of this particular engineering study.
Okay. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madera?
I just think the public might be interested why we need a traffic study at this critical moment in time.
Um.
In other words, they might think - they might think we're building a jail in North Park. Why do we need a traffic study?
There is concern, and I will also let Lisa step in if necessary, there is concern that due to - there might be increased traffic use in that particular area. There's going to be increased traffic to our facility. There's also then the concern that as part of the North Park PUD with the expansion of the other side of things, that there are just going to be a higher input of traffic, and we're wanting to kind of look into the future. We don't have the crystal ball, but we're trying to kind of get an idea and make sure that we are anticipating potential needs before they actually happen.
Ms. Ridge?
That was perfectly said. It's very typical to do a traffic impact study when you're making new connections to see - try and anticipate where the traffic's going to flow and then prevent, you know, traffic backup at certain intersections. So, it's kind of just staying a little bit ahead of the game if you can.
Thank you so much. I just think that, you know, we so rarely get an insight into what it takes to build a major project of this scale, and I want the community to appreciate how much we are looking out for, you know, traffic and making sure we have the requisite infrastructure as this important project develops. Thank you so much.
And I will note as well that the entire North Park area planned unit development, which is basically a set of laws and structures and regulations regarding the development of that entire property, is coming to us soon, and that's also part of this as well. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Great. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. You raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium? Looks like there's a hand raised. TSD, can you help facilitate that? It is not on my screen, but I see it on the other screen. And please give us your name and county residence and ask your question or make your comment.
Hi, my name is Lee Brunthefer. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I am a Monroe County resident. This traffic study, will it address pedestrian traffic or just vehicular traffic? Thank you.
Thank you. We will go ahead and field that question with Ms. Ridge and Ms. Purdy.
So, at the time, it is just for vehicular traffic, but also in the design of the new Hunter Valley Road connection, there is sidewalk and a side path that is being constructed also for the safety of the pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, so we've kind of already done that part of that research, but thank you for that great question. I'm glad that we were able to clarify them. Any other public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none. Ms. Turner King, if you would please call the roll on both the DLZ Traffic Study Agreement and the Traffic Study Cost Share Contract?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, next item.
I would like to move to approve the amendment to the 2020 Sophia Travis Community Service Grant for the Health Department.
I will second that. Ms. Turner King, tell us all about it.
So in February of this year, a representative of the Health Department reached out to the council office because they determined that they have approximately, it's a little more than $400 left of a Sophia Travis grant funds that they received as part of the 2020 Sophia Travis agreement. The agreement indicated that the funds were supposed to be used for disposal and that the funds were supposed to be used by the end of the calendar year of 2021. And so the Health Department was requesting an amendment to the 2020 agreement to allow them to use the remainder of the funds. And so I did talk to the Sophia Travis Committee about this, I think it was last week, well, it was last Friday. And their recommendation was that the Health Department should be allowed to use the funds. So this is the amendment to the contract that would allow such.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Commissioner Madera?
I just had one quick question. Down in the synopsis, it mentions wheeler mention.
Yeah.
It should say Health Department. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to, just wanted to make sure I had, I hadn't missed anything.
I was going to make the same point for the public, public record, that if you're looking at the packet, there is an error. All right.
Or we wheel away.
Yes. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Can you raise your hand on teams? Or come to the podium? All right, Ms. Turner King, if you would please call the role on the motion to approve amendment to 2020 Sophia Travis Community Service Grant for the Health Department?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, so we'll now move on to item I, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2025-11 Sunset Hill Rezone.
I will second that. Mr. Myers?
Morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. TSD could raise the volume a little bit in the room, but yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. So this is ordinance 2025-11, also known as REZ-25-1, the Sunset Hill rezone from HD to RES, as requested by the commissioners. The Plan Commission voted six to two to forward this with a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners with one condition of approval, and I'll get into details of that in a moment. But this is 100 parcels on approximately 64.44 acres in Perry Township, Section 6, and it is currently zoned HD. All right, so the request, as I stated, is to rezone from high development residential or HD to residential one or RES. And the purpose of this rezone request from the commissioners is to preserve the overall character of the area, which contains older established neighborhoods, the presence of sinkholes and other cars features in the area. It also incorporates the recent approval of the historic preservation overlay on 25 parcels in this neighborhood, as well as most existing homes stating that they don't have access to sewer and that most of them operate on a septic system. This request was made by the commissioners immediately following the adoption of the county development ordinance on December 18th, 2024. That request was reinstated on March 13th, 2025 during the commissioners' work session. Planning staff sent out approximately 85 property notice letters and 170 notice letters for this rezone specifically on January 31st, 2025. Evidence of that, the, the documents are included in the packet that show what those letters looked like and the information that was provided to the property owners and neighbors. Access to this sites, these sites are through South Corey Lane, West Piper Lane, South Anna Lee Lane, West Wiley Street, West Corey Drive, or West Bloomfield Road. So here is the rezone request for this neighborhood. Just some images here, you can see on the right side of the screen, all the properties that are zoned in the yellow or HD are the ones that are subject to the rezone to the RES zone. This is the former zoning map of this property before the county development ordinance was approved in December of last year. So you can see there was quite a bit of a mix of different zoning districts in this neighborhood, and these were all a result of the former fringe areas of the interlocal agreement that was back before 1997 with the city of Bloomington. So you can see there was quite a bit of different zones here. And on December 18th, 2024, this was all rezoned, except for this PUD, into the HD zones and then of course, the commercial districts, the salmon color here, those were transitioned into the limited business zone that you can see on this screen. But now we are requesting a different, a change in the zone from this HD district to the RES zone. On this screen, you can see the current zoning map. Those hatchings on the screen are the properties that exhibit the historic preservation overlay. The historic preservation overlay does not affect the underlying zoning district, but does provide protections as well as some flexibility with respect to zoning uses and also does provide some guidance on the certificate of appropriateness process, which is related to the external features or appearance of some structures in those areas. It only applies to those properties that are designated. It does not impact neighboring properties that do not have the designation. Okay, so a bit of a background here, and a lot of this information with respect to design standards and uses will also apply to the next ordinance that you'll be hearing from fellow planner Sean Smith, because the rezone request is the same going from HD to RES. So with respect to lot size, the HD zones' minimum lot size is .14 acres and the residential zones' minimum lot size is one acre. And the lot width will also change from 50 feet to 75 feet. Now, with respect to the one acre requirement for the RES zone, I will state that there is a provision in the ordinance that does allow for lots to be smaller than the one acre in the RES zone and would not require a minimum lot size variance to further develop the property, as long as other design standards are met, such as setbacks, impervious cover, things like that. The proposed rezone is also impacting side and rear yard setbacks. Side is going from five feet to 10 feet through this rezone and the rear yard is going from 10 feet to 20 feet. Accessory buildings less than 15 feet in height can have reduced setbacks of five feet in all zones. So I wanted to make sure that that was clearly communicated, that even though the setback is changing, accessory buildings that are short, meaning five feet in height or less, can be still five feet in any zoning district. If a property in the RES zone, I already talked about this bullet point. So yes, this basically talks about that one acre minimum requirement and that being a little flexible in the RES zone, as long as setbacks and other things can be met. A variance is only activated when new construction slash development is occurring on the property, which would require a permit. Otherwise, a property that's not compliant with lot size or setbacks is considered pre-existing, non-conforming, and they can remain as such in perpetuity until a new structure is built or expanded, altered, changed, or new development occurs in the property that would require a permit and a planning procedure. Okay, so on this screen now, we have the descriptions of the two zoning districts, the RES district as well as the HD district. I'm not going to read from the screen. This is also included in the packet, but it provides information on the district character between the two zones as well as their purpose statement. Now on the screen is the table that's found in the county development ordinance that details those design standards that I spoke on a few minutes ago. As you can see, the differences here between the HD on the left and the RES on the right, those changes in minimum lot width, lot size, maximum impervious cover, which I'm going to talk a little bit more on in a moment, changes a bit between these two zones as well as the setbacks on the, the side and rear setbacks. I will state that these properties are in the critical watershed of Clear Creek, so that does provide that more restrictive state provision here regarding the maximum impervious cover. So you'll just want to note that those two are the ones that would be applying here. And we'll talk about, more about that in a moment. On the screen now is the background discussion for the uses of the properties with respect to the two different, two different zoning districts. The highlighted items are items that are changing between the two zones. And if there's an asterisk next to it, it means it has standards that must be met or for it to get, to get approved. So you'll see on the HD zone side, on the left side of the screen, multifamily dwelling, three to four units, multifamily dwelling, five unit, five plus units. Senior housing, single-family detached dwelling, three to five units, two-family dwelling and childcare center are all in the permitted use section. Whereas on the residential side, on the right side of the screen, two-family dwelling is conditional use, childcare center is a conditional use. And you'll note that you don't see multifamily units anywhere located on that residential zoned side. And then of course, on the HD side, on the left side of the screen again, in the conditional uses, we have firearm sales, retail sales, small scale, which do not appear on the residential zone side. Conditional uses, I will say, they need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals at a public hearing. And so neighbors get notice that there's going to be a petition requesting that particular use nearby and there's an opportunity for them to discuss or ask questions or speak their concerns or support for those particular uses in their neighborhood. Okay, site conditions map, sorry for the resolution, it's a bit blurry, but it does show the presence of sanitary pipes as well, as well as water pipes on the screen, the blue being the water pipes and sanitary lines shown in green. So you can see that sanitary line is somewhat present in the neighborhood. However, a majority of the properties are all still operating on septic as sewer services are not being extended at this time. Brief discussion on the comprehensive plan. Phase one of the comprehensive plan for the Monroe County urbanizing area designated these areas as, see, it's in the orange, so it's the mixed residential. You can see on the screen on the right, that star indicates the location of the neighborhood. And then the comprehensive plan discussion for phase two describes it as N1 or urban infill neighborhood. And all this information is included in your packet with more discussions about what those terms involve. Now I'm going to take a moment to discuss the nonconformity in a bit more detail, because that has been a topic of a lot of discussion between the Plan Commission meetings as well as the county commissioner work session. So nonconformities, on the screen now, you see the definitions for nonconforming use, nonconforming structure, and nonconforming lot. And as I stated, any of those items, any of those definitions can apply to a property if it doesn't meet those specific standards, and it can remain as such until a permit process is triggered for the new development. So from the last work session, we, the planning department with the assistance of the surveyors' office and GIS coordinator Dr. John Baton, were able to provide some calculations that provide a little bit of guidance on where we're at with respect to nonconformity and at least the respect of impervious cover. So as I stated, Sunset Hill is located in the Clear Creek Critical Drainage Area, so those more restrictive impervious cover standards do apply. So HD has a maximum impervious cover of 50%, while RES has a maximum impervious cover of 10% of the lot size. So with the assistance of the GIS coordinator, using information that was provided from assessed structures, which does not include driveways or parking areas, mind you, we found that approximately 67% of the properties were conforming to the standard in the RES zone. And in the HD zone, all but one parcel was conforming to the standard. So there's a little bit of a, there's a difference there from 67% to, you know, 98% or so with respect to impervious cover conformity. We did exclude the parcel 717 South Anna Lee Lane to 725 South Anna Lee Lane. That is the one parcel that exhibits multifamily use within the Sunset Hill neighborhood and is part of the condition of approval to exclude that from the rezone request. And that property specifically exhibits 9% impervious cover, which would meet the standard from either the HD zone or the RES zone. I will take a moment too, to discuss that the Plan Commission is considering an amendment to the impervious cover maximums. This amendment in part has been drafted to consider the RES critical watershed impervious cover maximum from that current 10% of the lot size or 4,500 square feet, whichever is less, to be 30% of the lot size or 5,000 square feet, which could provide some relief for folks, because we are seeing a large uptick in variance requests specifically to the maximum impervious cover across the county. So we're working on adjusting that text in the ordinance to address that. And then if the text amendment were to proceed, this would increase the number of conforming lots to this particular standard. So that is a bit of a nonconformity analysis for the impervious cover. And again, you know, it's not totally conclusive because it did have to exclude driveways and parking areas. Finally, on the screen, I have letters of support, and these were included in the packet. So I will not leave them on the screen for very long as they are all accessible in the packet, as well as this letter of support. And then we also had a letter of opposition from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Again, this is included in the packet for your review. That brings me to staff's recommendation. So staff recommended that the Plan Commission forward a positive recommendation to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. They did so in their March meeting with the one condition of approval that 717 South Anna Lee Lane and 72 through 725 South Anna Lee Lane be excluded from the rezone request. You can see that image here on the right side of the screen, be excluded from the rezone because the use of the property is multifamily and the use would be considered nonconforming with the new zoning district of RES, which would be a nonconformity with respect to use, which can be a little trickier for any property owner to go through the variance process to remedy. And I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Myers, we really appreciate your explanations and, and your clarity for the public. Let's see if there's any, oh, Ms. Turner King, did you have a comment or a question?
I do have a comment.
Please.
In speaking with Mr. Schilling, he would have liked me to provide the following advice. So an interpretation of case law indicates that the applicant can amend their request. So in this case, since the commissioners are the applicant, they can amend the request. But if the applicant chose not to remove or amend the request, the rezone as proposed could still move forward. The Planning Commission's recommendation is advisory and they can either approve, their recommendation is either approve or deny, not amend.
Okay, thank you. Right, because it was amended to remove in this, for this petition, these addresses, which are on one lot, but they're multiple addresses. It's one parcel, but they're also in the historic overlay. Yeah, just to make things even more interesting. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Yeah, this is an interesting area here and I, I'm very much in favor of this. It's one of these situations where the city has just kind of grown around an area that's really in nature somewhat more rural. And I think it's important that, that people be able to, people who are already there be able to continue to enjoy things as they've known them in the past. To suddenly be enveloped by the city would be pretty unpleasant for a lot of people.
Thank you. Commissioner Madera, comments or questions?
No, and actually, I was coming at this from a slightly different angle, and I very much appreciate the very thorough and, you know, complex analyses given. I was there for the Planning Commission reports and debates, and we received a very, very comprehensive assessment in the last work session. And I very much respect my colleagues' opinions and I very much respect the residents' opinions as well. And I just have one concern, and that's the process by which this happened. And so this was left out of the CDO, and I think if it had been discussed in the CDO, it would have been handled a different way. If it's, since it's been handled outside the CDO process, it's my interpretation that it's actually under a sort of different it's actually under a sort of different code provision, which is Indiana Code 3674603. And I was grappling with everything, all of this complex information. And Section 603, I think, was kind of instructive and spoke to me in a different way. And it said, "In preparing and considering proposals under the 600 series, the Plan Commission and the legislative body shall pay reasonable regard to, one, the comprehensive plan, two, current conditions and the character of current structures and uses in each district, three, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, four, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and five, responsible development and growth." And several of those classifications are just subjective. It is subjective what considered, what is considered responsible development and growth, and that often evolves as certain areas evolve. But I think when I looked at the case law, that I saw most cases involved the designation of the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan has not been updated actually since 2012. And so I think we have some parcels here that it's not so much for this parcel as it is for the following one, Maple Grove Baby Farms. But I would give due consideration to Section 603, and that's sort of where my thoughts have been going in this, in this matter.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and that's part of what's driven some of this as well, is that specific code. So these, I'm going to talk about both of these areas, and when folks come up to comment, they may, you know, comment ahead, or they may speak twice if they wish, just to let you all know that. But these two areas were formerly part of the areas intended for annexation between the city and a county, and this agreement lapsed more than a decade ago in 2011. And during that time, we had to use city zoning. The city set the zone, and we had to live with it and work with it. So we had to learn counties, that when you got on the Plan Commission, you had to learn county zone and city zoning. And now this is something the city doesn't even use anymore, and it was still on our books. So it was a little crazy. But the city did not do anything, did not annex, did not extend sewer, and, and there's, one of the things that happened in the process of the CDO is as we had our work sessions, we addressed other areas like this elsewhere in the county that were still under city zoning jurisdiction. And because of that, they were just dropped into the same thing, because that's how it got moved to our new zone based on what it was under the city. We're not the city. That's not us. That's not who we are. And if you spend any time in these areas, you'll know, for folks who haven't, that these are not city-looking lots. These are definitely not that. So what was occurring at the city zone was automatically transferred to a county zone. And again, we had, we addressed most of this during our work sessions and through the CDO process, however inadvertently missed these. And so this is a very unusual thing to have the commissioners at this juncture asking for a planning petition because we don't typically do that. But postcards had already been sent out with, and the new map had already been passed. And so in order to provide people with the opportunity to offer commentary, this is the process that was deemed to be the most transparent. And, and I do apologize to the property owners who had to contact me and correct me and tell me, you didn't fix that. And I was like, oh, my gosh. So, and again, where it was, where it happened before, we addressed it and we dealt with it. And yes, one of the key things in that IC 36 legislation or statute regarding zoning, current conditions and character of current structures and uses in each district. And that's kind of the way to think through this because that's what folks who live there have. They can, as folks who live there, decide they're fine with the change. And that's how change happens. But it doesn't happen by somebody sitting somewhere else who doesn't live there making a decision for them, that higher density will benefit them somehow. And then they wake up one morning and find another student apartment towering over their house. So, so county advised, we follow this process that we're following now. And the, again, most of the properties are on septic. This is not vacant land that y'all can sit, you know, outside of these neighborhoods and make a decision that they should be this, that, or the other. We are, to me, this is a reflection of what's there, as close as possible. And again, nonconforming is, I've lived on a nonconforming property for years, decades, never had a problem as a result of that. And if you are adding onto your house, you may have to add onto the back instead of on the side. We don't have, and there's a lot of information we still don't have, and I appreciate what Dr. Batton did with the impervious surface. But again, with the, the next piece that we're looking at doing, again, to continue to improve and correct the CDO, then all of that changes anyway. So, and, and again, if your impervious surface is already there, it's a legal, nonconforming impervious surface. So you won't run into difficulties. So with this process, neighbors can be alerted, can be part of the process of changing their neighborhood if they choose to do so, instead of having it foisted upon them from someone else. Also recognizing here, we have a historic district, we have hobby farms, we have a whole lot going on. So I just, you know, because right now, somebody could come in, purchase property, put in a high-density apartment, and it doesn't really fit, right? If you think like, what would that look like? Well, it doesn't really fit. Now, I'm, you know, perfectly okay with keeping these exemptions, which is one parcel, but it's multiple addresses, 717 to 725 South Annalee Lane. I'm perfectly okay doing that, but it is already historic, so it's not going to become something completely different anyway. And it allows that, that property to conform more closely with what's there. So that's where I'm at on this. I think this is a good move. I think this is, you know, obviously something I had, hope we had done during the CDO process and hadn't. So that's where I'm at. So since we are the petitioner, let's go ahead and hear from folks who are supportive of this petition. If you would please come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room, or raise your hand on Teams. We'll take the podium first. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor of this petition? Please give us your name and county of residence, and we do ask you try to limit your comments to three minutes per person. Thank you.
My name is Dolores Brenniger. I live at 621 South Annalee Lane. I actually grew up in that house, moved back there when my husband passed away. It's a very quiet neighborhood, very narrow streets, very little sidewalk, and I'm all for going to where you're going for the residents.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here and being patient through our, sitting through the rest of our meeting, but that's, you know, you could...
No problem.
All right. Thank you. All right. It looks like we have comments, commenter online, T S D, if you could make that happen? I think it's that one right there. Can you see that, Ange?
Uh-uh.
Good, it's your eye test. Ah, Susan. Okay, well, we can come back to her. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition in the Nat U Hill Room?
Can you hear me now?
Ah, yes, if you don't mind, thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Brackney.
Sorry about that. I would have been there in person, but I'm a little bit under the weather. So, my name is Susan Brackney. I'm a property owner in the Sunset Hill area. I do support this rezon for several reasons. For those of you who aren't familiar with the area, it is environmentally sensitive and historically significant. You can think of it as a depression-era working-class village. Its residents worked in nearby quarries, in many of Monroe County's now defunct factories. Additionally, the properties were originally set up to accommodate supplemental or incidental farming and livestock. Multiple homes in the area are part of the historic preservation overlay, as you see, and still other homes in the area are included as contributing in the Indiana Historic Sites and Structures Inventory Database. But in addition to the ancient architectural styles of many of the Sunset Hill homes, there's a vernacular landscape that is important to consider as a site as a whole. The relation in this site consists of the way the houses were positioned on the land, the fact that the lots are comparatively large, and there is a back 40 for each home. This was neither accidental nor coincidental. It's an intentional relationship which enabled Sunset Hill's original working-class residents, and frankly, as well as many of its current residents, to farm incidentally or supplementally. It's also worth noting that in early September, I completed a request for determination of eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places and the Indiana Register of Historic Sites and Structures. And in mid-September, the Assistant Director of Preservation Services with that body at the DNR contacted me to say, quote, "We believe the district meets the criteria for inclusion in the state and national registers." So that doesn't mean that it's a greenlit done deal. It just means that we have more work to do. But we are moving forward with the next steps to apply for inclusion in both of those registers, and that's for that, kind of that whole area. Doing so doesn't cause any undue hardship for the residents. It, at least in theory, could open them up just to have some grants and funds and stuff if those things are even available down the road. I don't know, but, but anyway, there's a lot of good reasons to, to support this, and that's, that's all. I just wanted to go on the record as giving some of those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition?
Rarely on the side of the microphone. So thank you very much, and I'd like to thank you for this thoughtful rezon of the neighborhoods that you have described. I refer to them as Annexation Areas Three and Four because they are what the city kind of has called islands, although that, because they're surrounded completely by the municipality. That being said, these are distinct neighborhoods, and one of the aspects about my service as President of the Monroe County Plan Commission and of the Monroe County Board of Zoning Appeals and as a citizen planner from, that is recognized by the American Planning Association, one of the aspects of my service that I'm most proud of is how county leadership listens to the people. In these areas, you know, 66% of the people in Annexation Area Three, which is the baby farms area, and 71% of the people, property owners, in Annexation Area Four, which is Sunset Hills, have remonstrated successfully against involuntary annexation. They have expressed their will to remain as they are and not become part of the city. And I think that they have an identity, I know they have an identity because I've spent a lot of time in both of those neighborhoods. I've spoken with the neighbors, I've gotten to know people from that involvement, people I cherish, and they have spoken that they would really value remaining as they are. They live in single-family homes without a shared wall, they have large lots, they are what Peter Dorfman refers to as naturally occurring affordable housing. For all of the lip service given to affordable housing, these two areas are two areas where that's actually feasible within a somewhat of a proximity to the municipal area. I think there's an overestimation by people who live in the city of Bloomington to think of themselves and the community where they live inside the city as more valuable to the people who are not necessarily involved with the university than it truly is. And these people have farms, they can vegetables that they grow on their lots, they have a value for each other, they are neighbors to each other, they take people to doctor's appointments as they age, they check in on each other, they have chickens, they lay eggs, the chickens lay eggs. And I'm very moved to find this type of community in our larger, broader area. And I'm also very proud that Monroe County listens to the people. Now, this area had been previously intended for annexation, that annexation never took place, and as someone who is certified by the American Planning Association as a citizen planner, it's just a lot simpler for everybody if we go ahead and rectify the code to what is currently existing. And, and I think that this, I commend also the commissioners for bringing this to our attention this way, acknowledging that it was an oversight and taking care of it in this administrative manner. So I, I'm in favor of this. I think it's important to do. I think it's important because of the fragile landscape, and I, I think it's important for a way of life and preservation of affordable housing. So thank you very much for your efforts in this regard. Thank you.
And thank you again for your service. Appreciate you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Definitely.
Morning. I'm Roger Stewart. I don't live in that area, but I did at one time. I kind of stand here representing the fathers and mothers that lived there when I lived there, and how I witnessed those working people doing their jobs, coming home, taking care of their families, and, and taking care of their properties. I'm in favor of this rezon for Area Three in Sunset Hill and Area Four, the Maple Grove Baby Farms neighborhood. I'd kind of like to see the homeowners have the right to live in these neighborhoods without worrying multifamily structures being constructed in the future. They are affordable homes, and this is, these neighborhoods, as I said earlier, was, in fact, the home I lived in, I think it's over 100 years old, still standing. When I grew up there, there was probably 20 kids on my road, 20 kids in the neighborhood trailer park. kids in the neighborhood, trailer park, and, and Dee's place over in Annalee Lane, it was probably twenty-three kids, about sixty kids in that, in that one, uh, Sunset Hill area. Lot of, uh, baby boomers, so to speak, but everybody got along, everybody worked, as Margaret said, people had gardens, some of them had chickens, some of them had a cow or what have you, but, uh, if, almost if not all of those homes are still standing, and many are approaching it, if not over, already over a hundred years old. These areas have stood the test of time, and I think we need to continue that test. I'd like to take a minute and thank the commissioners for their work in, uh, correcting this zoning oversight. If you have any questions? Okay.
Yeah, appreciate that. Uh, in favor of, uh, this petition, please come to the podium. Surveyor in right, Randall.
Well, I'm here to speak neutral, um, but I, I wanted to come up here maybe before you ask for opposition.
Sure.
Okay, so this is a good time. So, really, I, I came to kind of, um, clarify just a bit of, uh, some of the discussion that was at the work session. So, um, my name is Tronin Wright Randolph, I'm the elected Monroe County Surveyor. On the county website, you can go to the surveyor page and you can find the responsibilities of the, uh, surveyor's office. That has a, a, a large list of things that was, uh, helped put together by the County Surveyor Association of Indiana. And then, within that, you can also see some of my statutory duties under Indiana Code Title Thirty-Six, Article Two, Chapter Twelve, Section One Through Five, that stipulate my charge of the perpetuation effort of the county. So, that does entail surveying work because we do have the ability to do boundary perpetuation surveys with a professional surveyor, but that does not include private surveying, private property. So, it's very complicated in nature, and I actually deal with a bit of uncertainty in, uh, things that are pretty ambiguous. So I just really wanted to clarify for the public that my charge is not to go out there and survey our individual properties and understand how they conform with certain compliances and setbacks. I do serve on the Monroe County Plan Commission, but I'm not here to advocate kind of my position there, I, I'm just here to really make sure that the public is aware of my charge and my duties. Some of my core functions is the public land surveying system and the GIS within the county. I'm very, um, happy that planning is working with my office and the GIS coordinator to figure out better ways to do calculations, uh, of impervious surface. We're also working with the auditor's office to help improve, uh, the representation of parcel lines. So, I have just a bit of information I'd like to share too, because this compelled me to kind of just dig in a little bit, because I could address these questions, but, again, I'm going to read this disclaimer so you understand why this isn't concrete information and why planning has certain provisions where they do ask for surveys, so they really have clear under ca, indication of if things are in compliance or not. So the disclaimer I'm going to say is the GIS disclaimer, Monroe County does not warrant or guarantee the accuracy of the information contained herein, and I have a map, so, uh, it contains herein and disclaims any and all liability resulting from any error or omission in this map. The lines and corners represented by GIS do not represent legal boundaries. Uh, users should not rely on them for any purpose other than a low accuracy approximation of location or lines or corners. They are of limited precision and are simply geographic representation. So, with that said, I did run some analysis and I did, um, do a couple selects by locations, so parcel lines, you know, and, uh, being in two thousand and eighteen, uh, did, uh, building footprints, um, so anything that has expanded since two thousand and eighteen doesn't really fall in this, but I think it gives us a good baseline. As you can tell, planning does use GIS to kind of have certain understandings, and then they go from there to make sure that they are requesting what they need to make a very informed decision. With that analysis, uh, sixty-four out of a hundred and five parcels fell within ten foot, so that's the setback, but to be fair, I did the five foot with the, uh, district that they're in, and it's about half that. So, we're already going to see issues with if it remains the same or if this gets approved and it changes. So I wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm telling a whole, complete story, and I'm not just trying to present information that really kind of, you know, might boister one side or the other. Eighty-nine out of the ninety-eight, which I know is a hundred, which is another, uh, outlier, uh, of using GIS, um, I did talk with Drew, and he did recognize the one that wasn't part of it, but from the analysis I had, um, eighty-nine out of ninety-eight don't meet the minimum lot size. But again, that might not be an issue. I, I did some calculations with impervious surface, but there's a lot of things in motion to address that and relieve that concern, and I applaud the commissioners, and I applaud the, uh, planning office, uh, to address those and continue to move those forward. Thank you, um, I hope I didn't go over my time, or maybe I wasn't being timed, and I just really want to make sure that, um, everyone's aware of my duty, my charge, and my intentiveness to the impacts on the county, and whenever I can provide a service, I do my utmost to provide that service. Enjoy the rest of the day.
Thank you. I think it's, it's just been a, um, longstanding frustration for residents who look at the GIS map and, you know, the lines going through their house or whatever, and, um, and it's just, it's just, um, a functionality of putting on a flat screen something that's on a slightly rounded part of the earth. But, um, if, if somebody is going to call for, hey, we really don't know this, well, if you could find that out, that's a good thing, so, um, I appreciate that Dr. Baden did the, um, impervious, uh, study, um, that was helpful, um, from the, uh, GIS office, so, thank you. Anyone else have comment in support? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition?
Good morning, Commissioners, this is Christopher M.G. on behalf of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. The proposal before you on downsizing the Sunset Hill and Maple Grove Baby Farm areas, we oppose. This ordinance changed these rezonings are unnecessary, reduce housing capacity in very urbanized areas, hinder economic growth, and really conflict with the county's own long-term developmental goals, and it seems to be based on a thirty-year-old mindset clouded by annexation, as we heard from Ms. Clemens earlier. And what I've learned more and more about this process, it's gotten more and more complicated where it's hard to figure out, I needed some sort of decoder wheel to sort of figure out what's included, what's not, and I don't, you know, I, I heard from the neighbors today, which I do appreciate, I've been on their side of the aisle, which I'll talk to in a little bit, but, you know, it's not, what's happening now is not going to change their quality of life, it's not going to push them out of their homes. I can recall this happening and, um, as a Perry Township resident in, uh, Sunny Slops where I live, where the Echo Park Apartments came in, and I spoke out against it, it was too large, it was going to cause this, it was going to cause that, ten years later, I was wrong. I, I was completely, it didn't cause any of the issues that we brought up, probably even enhanced the neighborhood, and this would be something that probably most of you would be against on a multifamily basis, but this is, this is a solution looking for a problem. I appreciate everybody's comments on this, but it really forecloses on some of, uh, opportunities to be creative with this land and, you know, really look forward with something that we could do with it, instead of sort of being stuck in the past where we're not moving forward on it. I mean, I'll probably spend a little bit of time later on to sort of discussing, I think, the complications of getting variances for doing any little thing with your property, other urban growth and some other things, but I think at this time, I, I think I've said enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? It looks like there's a hand raised online, but I cannot see the information. I'm going to log in, keep doing this. A T S D, it looks like there's a hand raised. Nancy Jones?
Yes. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, my name is Nancy Jones, I'm a Bloomington resident and Bloomington native, and I'd like to speak in support of the, uh, resolution and to just echo the statements by, uh, President Clemens and others in support of this. Largely, and, and the comment I want to make is, I don't think this is a, an issue of nostalgia, I think one of the, uh, the county has an interest in supporting the wishes of the residents, um, and that this, uh, this land is theirs, uh, and that they have the right, that changing the, that not changing it back, not changing it to a, um, downzoning the, uh, the two, uh, districts in question, um, would really undermine, I think, the, the great, uh, goal here, which is to, uh, support, uh, long-term, uh, residential use patterns that have been very, um, as we said, a form of natural affordable housing, and I think those reasons were clearly articulated. I think it's in the county's interest to support, um, the kind of, uh, use pattern that supports long-term residency and a long-term, uh, residential ownership. That, that is my chief, uh, comment at this point, thank you.
Right, thank you so much, so we'll log that as a point of, uh, support. Uh, anyone else wish to speak on this item, either for or against, if you haven't had an opportunity? Yeah, hand raised. Oh, is it still there? Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, um, so, um, well, I'll start with, um, Commissioner, um, Jones, did you have, uh, anything you wanted to add or, uh, any other comments you wanted to make on this particular item?
Yes, I do want to comment on the agricultural nature of this area, and in times coming up, urban agriculture is going to become more and more significant and important. We cannot always count on having food shipped off from all over the world to get to us. We, a time may come when we actually need to be able to look locally to sustain ourselves, and places like this could become very relevant for that. And I just, I, I am concerned that people are not paying enough attention to the need to support this kind of local agriculture.
Thank you, that's really, really insightful, I appreciate that. Commissioner Madeira, do you have any comments you wish to make?
Um, yes, I very much appreciate all that I have heard, thank you so much for your thoughtful testimony, and you've given us, uh, a lot to chew on.
And I will also go back and think, uh, the, the residents who were able to attend the, um, Plan Commission meeting, who, who logged their commentary, um, for and against, and I think asked some good questions, and I think those have been addressed now by staff. I really think that one of the key points here, and I think Commissioner Jones is on to something, is, you know, you can't, you can't, um,
Questions, and I think those have been addressed now by
You can't build your way out of, um, the, the necessity to sustain a community, and, um, more building is not going to be more affordable, um, and, because even if, just throwing this out there, but even if, uh, someone were to buy, um, significant acreage and put, um, one of the infamous paired patio homes or whatnot on them, they're certainly going to end up costing much more than the homes that are there, which have a historic value. And, yes, that's a subjective thing, um, a historic value, the agricultural value, the neighborhood ties, the, um, the way this community obviously has, um, a great, um, advocate for historic preservation and, and hopefully will become state and federally recognized in the very near future, if they even do that anymore, who knows, but, um, you know, uh, but, but I do think that there are a lot of opportunities here, and, um, and to the agricultural side, of course, you can do farm stands in Reswan, which is nice, so, um, but, um, I really, um, do think that, you know, change may come if the city decides they want to provide sewer, if, 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 change may come, and, but, but I think what this does is it says, the residents will have the opportunity to say at that moment, whatever moment that is, yes, we want to change, we want to see a change in our neighborhood, no, we, we want to have high-density housing, whatever it might look like, um, but those residents at that moment are the ones who should decide, not city planners from nineteen ninety, whatever it was. So it really puts the control back into the hands, um, of the residents, recognizing what's there. Uh, so with that, uh, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on Ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five dash eleven, Ms. Turner King, if you would please call the roll.
Certainly, and for clarity, this is Ordinance twenty twenty-five eleven, which rezones the one hundred parcels and doesn't exempt any.
Ah, no, I will, I will go ahead, I didn't realize I had to go ahead and do that, because this is part of the, um, resolution that came out of, um, the Plan Commission, so, um, that would be to follow, um, uh, this recommendation from the Plan Commission and exempt the single parcel which carries the addresses of seven one seven South Annalee Lane to seven two five South Annalee Lane. Thank you.
You're welcome, and so this is a, a rule call on Ordinance twenty twenty-five eleven, now exempting those parcels. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes two one.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
I would like to call to approve Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, the Maple Grove Baby Vote Farms rezone.
I will second that. Mr. Smith, if you would share with us those aspects that are different from what, um, Mr. Myers addressed already in the other, uh, ordinance, that might make your life a little easier, but it's up to you.
Yeah, absolutely, um, just doing a mic test, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this is, again, the Maple Grove Baby Farms area, um, so there are a total of a hundred and thirty-eight parcels, a hundred and thirty-two after we, uh, factor out the duplicate parcels. So, it's the same request as the Sunset Hills, so this is a rezone request from High Development Residential to Residential One. The purpose, uh, to preserve the overall character of the area, um, this contains older neighborhoods, there's presence of singles, cars, features, um, and as well as a number of existing homes that don't have access to sewer, um, but we will note that this particular request does not include historic preservation, so there will not be a discussion on that topic. This request was also made at the same time as a Sunset Hill rezone request. Planning staff, you know, just to note, we did send out, uh, ninety-nine property notice, or property owner notice letters and a hundred and forty-two neighbor notice letters for this rezone, um, so everybody in the area was notified, and then access to the site derives And then access to the site derives from West Third Street, so South Fairfield Drive, South Kimball Drive, and South Johnson Avenue are the three main intersecting streets, and they all derive access from West Third Street. And then I have an image on the screen, which just kind of details the overall area. And then on the right-hand side, the HD zoning, those are all the zones that are affected by this rezone request. Drew went through this background discussion or post, so I can always revisit this and restate sort of the same talking points if the commissioners would like, but I will go ahead and continue. So just a little bit of an analysis. So if we are measuring the lot size of all of the parcels, so the residential one zoning district has a minimum lot size of one acre. So for the Maple Grove Baby Farms, when it's all said and done, approximately 82% of the parcels are less than an acre, 18% are greater than an acre. But we'll note that in the residential one zoning district, the minimum lot size is not an issue, so long as all other design standards have been met. Again, the same information as a Sunset Hills rezone request, just a table stating what the character and the intended purpose of each zoning district is for. Design standards, also the same. Uses, also the same. This is the site conditions and infrastructure maps that I have. So on the left-hand side, apologize for the colors, it's not as quite clear on the screen, but essentially there is sewer available to specific properties. So not all properties in the Maple Grove Baby Farms area actually have access to sewer. It's only select parcels, which I will get into later in the presentation. And then on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll notice the blue overlay color that indicates the area that's within the Clear Creek watershed. Comprehensive plan discussion is the same as the Sunset Hills rezone. Again, it's also an urban infill neighborhood. I do also have a slide on the non-conformities, whether they're used, structure, or lots. I will actually maybe come back to this slide in a moment. I did want to use the property 101 South Fairfield Drive as an example of what we mean by what non-conformity is. So this particular property was issued a building permit in 2014 for 43 units. I did want to point out that even if it does retain its HD zoning, this actually exceeds the number of units that would otherwise be allowed outright under the zoning district. So we did some calculations, and approximately, if this were proposed today, they could have 22 units in total. So I'd also wanted to point out that multifamily developments, more than 30 units on a lot, are actually subject to Plan Commission approval. So this kind of goes back to that, you know, non-conforming. So maybe not necessarily the lot itself is non-conforming, but maybe it's the use that's non-conforming, because it would actually exceed the number of multifamily units allowed on the property. Dr. John Bateman did an excellent job providing us with some analysis of the non-conformity. So specifically for Baby Farms, Maple Grove Baby Farms, approximately 71% of the properties were conforming to the impervious standard in the R E S zone. If we were to retain the HD zoning, all but one parcel was conforming to that standard. And I do have some addresses on the screen. These were part of the Plan Commission's approval to the Board of Commissioners to exclude. So we did like a quick analysis of each of these properties. So 101 South Fairfield was approximately 54% impervious cover. So that would well exceed the R E S zoning standards. The next property at West Evergreen was approximately 60%. 415 North Kimball was approximately 40%. And 215 North Johnson was approximately 60%. And then we have some significantly lower percentages for the remainder of the properties that were included in that request. So 325 North Johnson was approximately 15%. 2312 West Beaumont was approximately 13%. And then 120 South Kimball was approximately 25%. All of these calculations, you know, these are done on the G I S visually, but also using that parcel improvement data that the Assessor Office maintains. And then, of course, to reiterate what Drew had already mentioned, the Plan Commission is considering an amendment to the impervious cover maximums. So, you know, for example, if what is currently drafted, if it were to be changed to be approximately 30% of the lot size, you may see the last three addresses mentioned, they might actually become conforming. So I do have a graph, just to kind of illustrate what this looks like. So on the left-hand side, we have the R E S. If this were to be proposed as is, you know, approximately 71% of those parcels would be conforming to the impervious cover, and 29% would be non-conforming. And then on the right-hand side, we have the HD, where 99% of them would be conforming, and about 1% would be non-conforming. But as I just mentioned, there is an amendment that's going through the process at the moment. So if that were to be increased, you might see the red on the left-hand side shrink significantly. These are letters of remonstrance that were also included in the packet. So like the previous petition, I won't spend too much time on these, but I will at least go through them really quick with you. This letter did include some nice graphics, so I also included those for the presentation.
Mr. Smith, that letter relates to, just to clarify, the address of 101 South Fairfield, correct?
Correct. And they, they also included 111 North Kimball, but yeah.
Thank you.
I also included some other letters of remonstrance. Some of these, or I should say, most of these did not include addresses or parcel numbers. So I'm not entirely sure which they are referring to, but they otherwise expressed their opposition. This particular remonstrance is referring to the 215 North Johnson Avenue property. Now I turn to letters of support. I don't believe this particular letter of support included a specific location, but nonetheless did want to voice their support. And then this is a letter just generally supporting both rezone requests as they're presented. So the Plan Commission did vote 62 to forward a positive recommendation to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners as presented by planning staff, based on petition's compatibility with Monroe County Comprehensive Plan, with the following condition. So these are the conditions that will include the properties that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. So to avoid creating non-conformities, consideration should be given to the zoning of the following pre-existing multifamily developments at 101 South Fairfield Drive, 2542 West Evergreen Drive, 415 North Kimball Drive, 215 North Johnson Avenue, 325 North Johnson Avenue, 2312 West Beaumont Lane, and 120 South Kimball Drive. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate your report and the information you provided. Comments or questions, Commissioner Madeira?
I think my comments and questions are pretty much reflective of what I said in the Sunset Hills. I will note that one of the things that I think communities go through when they grow are these kinds of tensions and these kinds of conflicts. And I very much appreciate the thoughtful way in which this process was handled and the very intellectual and erudite contributions and on both sides of the issue. I did want to say something about the importance of supporting long-term residents. And there are only so many areas into which a city can grow. And of course, we know that these are actually subject to litigation at the present time. We also know that with the Baby Hills, I'm sorry, Maple Grove Baby Farms rezone, we have people who have purchased property in reliance on the wish to develop at some point. And that's of a bit of concern to me. So this property, I think, is even one that I feel more conflicted about than Sunset Hills. And of course, it's bordered by I-69. So I think when we think of the tensions, you know, there's the tensions between the ability of residents to bind others outside their borders and to bind others in neighborhoods outside their borders. And that's always going to be up against tension with very, very important considerations like those mentioned by Commissioner Jones, which is due regard for urban agriculture, which is the future of our community and the future of many other communities. And I would say that this process sort of reminds me, when I go through and sit on it, of that old Operation game that I play with my kids still. And, you know, you go in to get like water on the knee or some facetious parts of the body. And if you have batteries in the game, which actually we did not always have in our game, you know, you touch one side and it goes, you know, and the red light lights up. And so I think that determining housing and zoning, basically in this community and many others that are going through these kinds of growth struggles right now, is a bit like the game of Operation, because you try to see, can we develop in this area? Or can we, what should we do with this area? And no matter what else, what you decide, you're going to go up against one side or the other. And so, but I think it's very important for both of those sides to have the ability to buzz and to voice their concerns. And I very much appreciate the thoughtful and comprehensive way in which it's been done in this process.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
I'll stand by what I said for the previous one.
Yeah, I will as well, and I appreciate Commissioner Madeira's points. You know, the other issue is, when you look at this particular neighborhood and you look at the map, people will look at it and go like, whoa, look at all that vacant land. Well, a lot of the people who own a house on one piece of property actually own the vacant lots adjoining. I'm not sure why they're not combined. For whatever reason, they're not. That's an assessor question, not a commissioner question. But, you know, that's, and there are barns, there are crops, there are farm animals. It is, it's a cool place. It's a very cool place. So, okay, so, and also, again, we still have the sensitivities of the environment. A critical watershed, this is a very critical watershed area as well, and I'm not sure how much it can take. I will point out that, yes, indeed, the apartments at 101 South Fairfield are, would not, are going to be, are already non-conforming, pre-existing entities. I will also note for the record that the mobile home parks, very small mobile home parks, are also pre-existing non-conforming, because we would, under the C D O, require that they produce and create a planned unit development that includes a storm shelter, which I hope they have. All right, so let's go ahead and see if there's any public comments on this petition. First, we'll hear from people who support this petition.
Well, once again, I'm Dr. Margaret Clements. I have a Ph.D. in Policy Studies and Policy Analysis. And I'd like to address one common kind of fallacy that keeps getting perpetuated, and that's this idea of growth. Bloomington population hasn't really grown. And we, as government agents, need to consider whether or not we're pushing people away or pulling them in. And I would argue that we've been pushing people away. We're not pulling them in. And part of that is because of what we've done to the idea of community. Annexation Area 3, Maple Grove Baby Farms, says it all. It's an area where baby farms are supposed to be. Those people have expressed quite vociferously and on repeated occasions that they would like to be less dense. And supporting long-term residents should be a goal of our government. And I share that goal, to support long-term residents. In preparation for this meeting and for this discussion, I have telephoned many of the people that I had spoken with in Annexation Area 3 in this Maple Grove Baby Farm area. And they are so appreciative of county government considering their wishes, so that they don't feel so harassed by city development goals. So I, they don't share the city development goals. They were not involved in the discussions for city development goals. The city development goals may not serve them, and they at least say that they don't serve them. And I would say, in order for the City of Bloomington to be relevant to these people and to long-term residents, there's a lot more discussion that needs to take place, and it hasn't happened yet. So I urge you to adopt this downzone and to respect the will of the long-term residents who have this neighborhood as their way of life. They deserve it. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Mr. Stewart?
Registerd again. I'd like to tell you, I appreciate what you've done. Secondly, I support this downzoning. I had a thought about people purchase property on speculation. Yeah, it happens. So any questions, I'll answer.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the podium or raise your hand on teams.
Good afternoon. I think we're afternoon now. Commissioners, this is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Encourage you to reject this ordinance as well. I think what we've heard is this thing where that's changing of life for the neighborhood. And, you know, I don't see the status quo as doing that. I think this is, if you look at the map, this is an area that's ripe for urbanization. And just to go through a couple of the concerns raised by two elected officials, one was County Councilmember David Henry, which believes it forecloses on opportunities to be creative small footprint development. There's an opportunity, especially with tiny homes and other type of structures, to infill small parcels in a way to not only retain the character, but maybe restore the character. The fact that downzoning forecloses on this creates fewer opportunities. I'll mention who we heard from today, County Surveyor Tron Niran Randolph, who cautioned that pros changes would put a lot of burden on people's property just to do simple things. He notes that owners will now have to pursue variance in the Board of Zoning and Appeals for even the most modest changes, and we know what a hurdle that can be. And the other thing is the pie that needs to grow for the county. The county has a lot of bills to pay with the new Justice Center. We're looking at S B 1. In order to meet those needs of all county residents, that pie needs to grow. The best way to do that is for growth. These conversations about These conversations about urbanized agriculture, good conversation to have, but it can't be just thrown out every time we want to grow a little bit. We need a larger conversation on this, and this is not the platform to make this sort of change. We need to think about, you know, future generations, not just those living in the current development, but have a vision. And this is not a vision, this is something stuck 30 years ago, and we should reject this ordinance and this downzoning. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. We also have Gina May from TRG Management. If TSD, that's, she's online, if TSD could get her, oh, there we go. Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience. We cannot hear you. You need to unmute.
Now try it.
There you go. Got it.
Okay. Computers. Thank you. I think the same comment that I made at the first meeting there in Bloomington, it's not that TRG opposes the downgrading, it's just, we totally understand the infrastructure, the watershed. I mean, we totally understand that. Our total interest is making sure that we get our exception, if you will, so that we can continue to operate as is. It's a very small manufactured home community. Every lot is needed in order to pay the bills for those residents. It provides nothing but affordable housing for that area, which is totally residential. So again, we understand it, but it's just very, very vital to us that we keep our exceptions, that we can keep operating the way we are.
Can I ask you, may I ask you a question? Is this the, can you give me the address of this property? I want to make sure that we've got this on our list.
Yes, it is. It's the 215 North Johnson Avenue.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah. And just to clarify, pre-existing nonconforming means you can continue to do what you're doing on your property, even if it doesn't match either HD or Residential One zoning. So that's the good news. You can continue to do as you've done. Appreciate that. And anyone else? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Christine Bartlett with Ferguson Law on behalf of Regency Hadley Village. We do appreciate the exclusion of 101 Fairfield. We hope that that will be amended today formally and excluded from the rezone. But today, I'd like to talk about 111 Kimball and ask that that also be excluded. On the map, you can see it's the property just to the east of 101 South Fairfield. 101 South Fairfield actually kind of hugs around it on both sides. And to be clear, we understand that there will be issues already with compliance and that we're already previously nonconforming by the prior change in zoning. So we understand that that property couldn't be used to make more units for this development. But one thing that it could be used for would be to add an additional amenity for the property at 101 South Fairfield Drive. When this property was rezoned to HD, one change that did occur is it requires multi-building, multi-unit developments to have at least two amenities, which was not a requirement to our understanding under the prior zoning. So this property at 111 Kimball, which was purchased by Regency with the idea that it would be folded into the Hadley Village community, could be used to become more in compliance or closer into compliance with existing zoning by becoming one of those potential amenities for the existing apartment community. So we would just ask that that also be considered for exclusion. We obviously submitted a memorandum providing some general reasons why we think the property west of Kimball Drive is different in character enough that it could be excluded as a whole. But today, our primary ask is of 111 Kimball. Shane Allen, I think, is still on the remote attendance, but if not, I'm here to answer any questions that may come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to offer commentary?
That includes us.
No, I'm going to come back to the board next. I just was checking through the pictures on my laptop. Okay, we are good. I think I don't see any more hands. And yes, I will now come back to Commissioners for final comment. Commissioner Madeira?
Yes, I wanted to, again, thank everyone for their thankful commentary and especially those that brought forward new information, new requests today. That very much helps clarify some things that, you know, we will need to know when considering this important measure. And I just wanted to address the idea that there's, growth is a fallacy for this community. Growth is an imperative. It is not a fallacy. The trick is to get it in appropriate times and places and spaces, and that is the democratic venture. And we are elected not just to serve long-term residents of communities, but to represent all residents of communities, including property owners, including business owners. And again, that's part of the pull and the tug. And I'm very respectful and appreciative of this democratic pull and tug and the opportunity to have a say in this pull and tug. But I think growth is a communal imperative, and I think looking at our demographics, we do have people moving in, and we do not want these people to move out. We need these people more than ever before to support the long-term residents who are getting older and to support our businesses that need their dollars. And so we must create new opportunities, we must get new employers. And in fact, I think in the Planning Commission meeting, one of the residents of, I believe it was the Maple Grove Baby Farm area, even charged the Chamber of Commerce with bringing in residents and that is, you know, and new employers and new residents that in turn can become long-term residents. And I think that that imperative is hard to fulfill if we turn every area down for development. And so, again, it's that democratic pull and tug, and maybe certain areas are right for development at certain times and other areas are not. But we always have to keep in mind that growth is what we owe our community, appropriate growth, sustainable growth, responsible growth.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Yes, well, right off, I'm afraid that I have to take exception to sustainable growth. That is actually an oxymoron. We cannot grow forever and ever and ever. That's not possible. We need to start thinking about how we can pursue life from a different perspective. I was elected by the people who actually live in this community. No one who wanted to move to this community voted for me. I think it's extremely important that I pay attention to what I hear from the majority of the people of this community, which is that they like it. They like it as it is. Most people are not desperately anxious to see major changes happen to our community. Most people do not want to live in Portland. If they wanted to live in Portland, they'd probably move to Portland. They have chosen this Monroe County because it suits them the way it is. So I will be supporting this.
All right. Thank you both. And clearly, there is a great deal of debate. You know, is the population going up? Is population going down? Why is the city prioritizing creating student housing for IU instead of housing for people who can live and work in the community? Why is the city not providing sewer? Why is the city continuing to insist on pursuing lawsuits against county residents? Lots of questions. Not our job to answer them all today, but I think we're acknowledging them all. And I think that the concerns about, hey, we need growth, yeah, okay. Once again, this doesn't say zoning can never change. What this says is, this is not high-density zoning area. This is not what this is now. What it's doing is it's setting the zone to what it is now. It is not preventing any changes in the future, but what it does do is it protects those folks who live in this community from having something foisted upon them, which has not been there yet. And who knows if and when it will arrive. And by the way, we have a lot of talk about, gosh, we need housing. Well, if you look at the Regional Opportunities Initiative study, they identified a certain number of units that we had to have in this community, meaning county, city, and Elletsville. And guess what? We've already passed that number of new units, planned or done. So now what? Now we've met that number. We've exceeded that number. Now we're still somehow doing something wrong. Let's see if there's demand beyond that number. But at the same time, what we're doing is the prudent thing, which is, planning staff has been asked to develop a clear housing inventory. And my hope is that the city participates. So far, they are not. Let's find out what's vacant and what's not. The other concern I have, for those of you who do live in the city, is how many apartments are sitting vacant? And we do not know that number. Somebody knows that number, but they're not telling you. Why aren't they telling you what that number is? I think it'd be really interesting to know the next time the city council wants to look at another apartment complex, how many empty apartments are there now? Do we need to add more? Because what you're doing is displacing people out of potential homes, long-term homes, not apartments. And that's a different kind of living situation. And I think we have to accommodate everyone, and I think we are. Look at the mobile home park, look at the apartments, look at it all. So I think what we're doing, in my book, is recognizing what's there. So with that, I would like to call for a vote, and I'm going to go ahead and read in those addresses that the Plank Commission had asked us to consider excluding. And that is 101 South Fairfield Drive, 2542 West Evergreen Drive, 415 North Kimball Drive, 215 North Johnson Avenue, 325 North Johnson Avenue, 2312 West Beaumont Lane, and 120 South Kimball Drive. And I will note for the representative from Ferguson Law that I think what you want to do needs to have a, needs to be part of a conversation with planning staff, and I encourage you to have that conversation because no matter what, I don't think it would work in either zone. So I think it's a matter of going to planning staff and talking about a BZA process, which is actually very simple. I don't know why people think it's complicated, but it's really not. All right, so that's what's on the table, which is what the Plank Commission handed us. And Ms. Turner King, if you would please call the roll on ordinance 2025-12.
So this is a real call on ordinance 2025-12 as amended to remove those addresses from Section 1. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira? Commissioner Thomas?
All right, motion carries 3-0. Again, a huge thank you to everyone who came, participated, Plank Commission here today. Thank you all for your patience. It's been a long morning, but I think it really, I think we've gotten a lot of things on the table and have talked through a lot of key issues, and I appreciate everyone's participation online as well. So we do not have any appointments today, but I do have a few announcements, and I will make them as quick as I possibly can. Believe me. So first and foremost, I do want to note that county government is closed tomorrow, which is April 18th. And we are not meeting next week, so our next meeting is on May Day, May Day, May Day. And that is going to be right here in the Nat U Hill Room, May 1st, 10:00 a.m. And so no meeting on the 24th, and per the minutes, we're not meeting on the 34th either. So, with that in mind, but I do want to encourage folks to contact their township trustee if they do have a rural housing repair. The ARP of funding that remained and could not be spent before the deadline is in the hands of the Bloomington, oh my gosh, foundation. Oh my gosh. It's been a long morning.
Long morning.
Long morning. Not enough caffeine in the world. And so please contact your township trustee, and they will help guide you toward making an application. I also encourage folks to get onto our website, co-monroe.in.us. While you're there, please click on the megaphone. Make sure that you are weather aware. We do have storms coming in this weekend. We're going to have a rainy weekend, and there may be more, the F-word flooding. And so you can sign up to receive alerts so that you are in the know and keep you and you are safe. Also note, we do have virtual office hours six times each month. Go to the calendar on that homepage. And the next blood drive is Thursday, May 8th, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., IV tech, C-130A and B. Please go to redcross.org to apply. I do, I don't think I have anything else. Is there anything else I'm missing?
No, I just want to say I appreciate you all. I appreciate everyone who's worked through these issues on the Plank Commission and the residents who took the time to respond. And again, government is as valuable as the people who participate in it, so thank you.
Commissioner Jones, anything for the good of the order?
No, I don't.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So we do have a work session. Can we do 12:45 for the work session? TSD, okay with that? Cat's okay with that? Good. Okay, yay, thumbs up. All right. 12:45 for the work sessions. Thank you all.